Evening, welcome to the February the 25th Board Meeting. Mr. Strasser, would you please call the roll?
Horsley.
Here.
Miracle.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Scott Dracy.
Here.
Mr. Wood, rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to... Motion by Mr. Miracle, can I get a second? Second by Mr. Scott Dracy, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent, we're up to presentations and next to you.
Yes, Mr. Faulkner, members of the board. We have a number of presentations this evening, starting with our technology presentation. I'd like to introduce Ms. Ashley England, key language arts teacher at Norwood Middle School, for our monthly technology presentation. I think what you'll be able to see tonight is technology in the classroom in all of our five buildings. And tonight, the middle school is significantly different than technology in a classroom was when some of us were in school, or when our students who graduated two years ago, when they were in school. Is that there's always, there's a misnomer that technology in the classroom is that there's some computers in there. The technology in the classroom is how we're integrating it into the instruction, and how is it enhancing instruction for our kids and learning for our children. And so each month, we have a different school that we spotlight, and tonight, it's Ms. Ashley England from Norwood Middle School. So come on up, Ashley.
Okay, so I'm Ashley England, and I am a 7th grade reading teacher at Norwood Middle School. And I will be presenting about the technology that I use in my classroom. And we do some different things, and I've started doing some new things this year. And for some reason, the full screen button's not working, so we'll go with it as it is. So a few things that we talk about in my classroom, we use Newsella. And that is a Lexile reader that allows students to read at their own level. So I get to pick nonfiction news articles that have happened recently, as recently as the day before. And I assign those to my students, and they're able to read at their own level. So students that I have that struggle with reading, I can lower that Lexile level for them to add to the success of their learning in my classroom. Everything on Newsella is connected to the Common Core state standards. And each reading passage has four quiz questions that cover what they read. And they cover all the different standards that we could be talking about in reading class. So they might see central idea questions, they might see questions about the craft and structure of how it's written and how it's organized. And they have a quick little four-section quiz. And I have a photo of what that looks like, and I can get a little closer as well. So when they log on to the computer, it shows them the main article that they're highlighting. And again, they can go through and look at those, and I can assign articles for them. They can pick articles that they want, and everyone in my class knows what level they're at, and they are successful at. Another thing that I use in my classroom as far as technology is Study Island, and that's a program that we have at the middle school. And students have the ability with Study Island to work on skills that they need help with. So if I have students that are struggling with main idea, I can assign them a main idea practice and really allow them to get the extra help that they need. I can reset assignments for them to let them retake it, and that allows them the extra practice that some students need. And I can also advance my 7th grade students to 8th grade if they are being extra successful in my class and really give them a push in the right direction. I can create tests and quizzes on Study Island, and I can really monitor my student progress, not only with graphs and charts, but just with the data and the numbers that it shows. And again, that's also connected to Common Core standards. And I picked a little picture of what the quiz would look like. They get a small reading passage set up very much like their state testing will be set up with the passage on one side and the questions on the other side to get them used to what they'll be expected to be able to do on their state testing. I also use Google Classroom a lot in my classroom, which allows teachers to post any assignment online. So it's not necessarily taking a worksheet and embedding it as an online assignment, but it's really hands-on. They can have discussions online, they can post comments to assignments that I give them, they can create things and post it back to me to turn it in. So for mine, when my students log on, it's very much different for each class, and I'm able to assign different postings. It's very much like Facebook in a way, so students are familiar with it, they're able to use it, it's easy to get around on, they can see what other people put on there if I want them to, so we can have those group discussions if needed. And the students really seem to engage with being able to put their assignments online instead of turning in paper. We also use Google Sites, and I use Google Sites a lot in my classroom because it allows students to have research, many research projects in a safe environment. So I put together Google Sites in order to make sure that my students can do research and go to sites that I deem appropriate, so there's not a whole lot of issues with, oh, this website's blocked, or I can't get there. But they can actually get on there and do their own research, but with sites that I've already picked for them. Specifically, I do one for the outsiders when we read, and we actually take a tour of the 1960s in class, and so they get to see the music, the culture, the clothing that they would wear, the cars that they would drive. So we don't have as many questions while we read the outsiders as far as, what's a Madra shirt? They already know going into it because we've researched it. We also talk about Remind 101 in my classroom, which is amazing if there's a snow day or a problem and I need to contact students to remind them of homework. So I haven't used it as much this year as I would have liked to, but students are able to put their phone numbers or their parents' phone numbers in, and I can actually send them a text message from my computer and tell them, hey, don't forget your homework is due tomorrow, or hey, don't forget, it's a snow day, but I still posted something online for you. So again, just a really good program for students to be reminded of assignments. And I put a screenshot of that. It doesn't include the teacher's phone number at all, so you're completely only known by your Remind 101 phone number. I also put Toon Do on here. It's a way for students to make their own cartoon books. So in class, if you're reading something and you want them to show that they have knowledge of the plot, they can actually create their own cartoon. So again, a creative way to show that they're learning and they know what the series of events are, they know what's happening. This is used in a variety of classrooms. So again, just a new way to make sure that students are engaged in their learning and not just that traditional worksheet on a Google Chromebook and asking them to do it. This is a different, more creative way. Kahoot is jeopardy in a way. My students love this game. When I turn on Kahoot, they actually scream for it, they love it. We play it for review, we'll actually be playing it again this week for review. And students can have their own computer in front of them and actually click on the answer, and the faster they are, the more points they get, and it keeps a running tally, and the kids get really competitive with it, and they really, really enjoy it. And it's a really fun way to keep students engaged in their learning. And again, I put a picture of that. And last but not least, we have Haiku Deck, which is just a different way to do presentations. This is a prezi that I have today, but Haiku Deck creates different kinds of presentations with short snippets of words, so six words or six phrases, and pictures can be added to it a lot easier than prezi, so students can really design their own presentations and become engaged in class. And I think that's it.
Ask you another couple of questions for you.
Sure.
How often are you engaged in using Chromebooks, very typical?
I would say close to every day.
Close to every day. And the kids just come in, get them off the cart, sit down, log in?
Yeah, I always have a to-do list on my board, and so my students know when they come in everything that they need to grab for the day, if they need their reading notebook, their computer, a pen, a pencil, scissors, whatever it is that we're using that day. So as they come in, so we're not wasting class time, they get everything they'll need for the day, and they sit down, and if they need a Chromebook, they know to get logged on.
How, from the beginning of the year and as the year progressed, how was the... How were our students in their understanding, their accessibility, basically their skill level on the Chromebooks?
I would say this year, students came in pretty prepared compared to last year when we first got them. But up till now, they're really, really getting good at them. We had a lot of problems with Google Classroom at first and just getting them to understand where things were and how to pull things out, but now they're pros. They know where everything is, they know how to get to things. Sometimes they even find mistakes that I've made, and they can fix it for me. So they're definitely doing really, really well.
And have you had sufficient professional eval and training? It's been helpful for you, what the district has provided?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ashley, thank you very much, nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah, our next presentation for the evening is Ms. Maureen Heitz from the Gear Up Grant and the Gear Up Program, so Ms. Heitz, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome, everyone. How are we doing? That was a wonderful presentation. Prior to myself, they always are. We learned so much of what's going on in our schools. Anyway, I'm Maureen Heitz, and I'm located in the high school and in the middle school, not enough at the middle school, I'm working on that. And I work with grades 7 through 12 on college and career access and readiness. And we are making strides, and we present every month to keep our board updated, to keep our public updated, and to basically show off how great our students are at Norwood and how well they're doing. We're gonna start with our usual data, which is very important. Each month, we have a theme. Last month, it was FAFSA, well, I should have quizzed you. Last month, it was FAFSA. We have Naviance as a theme and everything else. Today's theme is UC Blue Ash Math Collaboration. Now, next month, make sure you're all here, it's gonna be fabulous. UC Blue Ash is actually coming with their writing fellows, but we'll just hold on that thought. Tonight, I'm here to talk about math, and just to go over some of the data, an update with our post-secondary reports, Jess and I always have one for you. Thank you. As you see, numbers are growing. We're doing great. This has been a big month, a big month for the seniors, January and February with the FAFSA. And we won't repeat the whole FAFSA conversation that we had last month and educated everyone. But the good news was Liberty Taxes came in and are continuing to offer free taxes, free tax support, free process for all of our seniors, for everyone that lives at their house, and all of our staff that work at the high school. And they came and spent all day and all nights, we were here until 10:30 that night, but that's okay. We got a lot of students done, because to go to college, any college, two-year, four-year, doesn't matter, you have to have a FAFSA. It's the law of the land, it's the way it is, and the FAFSA is the federal document that helps our students pay for college, be it loans, be it Gear Up money, be it foundation money, it doesn't matter. You don't get a dime, you don't walk through the front door of any school without filing a FAFSA. And it's a very intense project, because it involves W-2s and taxes, but it's doable. And I'm so proud of our seniors, because that's all we've been doing. And our deadline, everybody, was President's Weekend, of course, and there's no school, and it's Valentine's Day Weekend and all of that. And our seniors, to get institutional money, which means, I'll give you an example, NKU, we love them this year, they've been great. They were having a workshop Tuesday nights, some crazy hours, Saturday mornings, and I was like, you just gotta come to Norwood. I can't get all these people to you. And they came, and they met with just our students, have been accepted and confirmed, and it snowed the day they were supposed to come, so we had to reschedule, and she called me, she's like, I've gotta get there before the priority deadline, which was that Thursday of the four-day weekend across the state, across the United States. That is the priority deadline for money. And that's free money from the institution. So NKU, for instance, anyone going there had to have their scholarship applications in by midnight that weekend, and we weren't gonna... The kids, you know, we do this together, they're not gonna come in on a weekend, we have reality here. Anyway, they came, some parents came, which I was thrilled, and they learned about scholarship and money, and everybody, every senior made the priority deadline. And that means they got money for UC Blue Ash. If you have a 3.0 and you got your FAFSA in by that night, you've got an extra $1,000. If you're at NKU and you have a 3.5 with an ACT, you're 25, you've got $6,000 if you got that FAFSA in by midnight. So it works, and our kids responded, and our parents responded, so that's free money. That's not loans, that's not Gear Up, that's not foundation, that is just money, because you're, the college is excited that you're going there, and they're willing to give you money, and thank you, and help you with the whole process. So I do wanna give kudos to NKU, because they actually came here, and we had about 25 people in the room as she went over the money. It was all about money, which we're at that point now. So basically, right now, we have 123 seniors, and Mr. Munchen, our awesome counselor with our seniors, and Mr. Collins worked directly with these statistics, and you all don't get them out there, so I'm just gonna say them out loud. So out of the 123, we have 92 applicants, some, but 92 students have applied somewhere. And every, college is not for everyone. Some of our students are going into the Armed Forces, two of them, I'm going to an apprenticeship career fair in April, and I'm getting them all set up with the whole plumbers, air conditioning people, everything, and they are gonna go into full-blown apprenticeships, making $20,000, and in six months, probably up into $40,000, but they're gonna have a plan. Our goal with Gear Up is that every student that walks across that stage in May, senior, starting in 7th grade, learns that they have to have a plan, a post-secondary plan. And every student's plan is different, and we have to respect that, and they're all fun plans, and they're interesting. Okay, so 74.79% of the students have applied. We have three right now that are signed and sealed for the Armed Forces. And as of two days ago, or yesterday morning, 41 have submitted their FAFSA's. And the rest can still and will have to submit their FAFSA's, but 41 made it for the deadline to get the institutional money. And others didn't, and that's okay, too. Right now, in the lead, we have 34 students, seniors, that have applied and been accepted to go to UC Blue Ash, 22 at NKU, and 22 at University of Cincinnati Main Campus. And what will happen is the students have time to make their final decision, but I wanna tell you, we had a very exciting time. UC Blue Ash came out again, they're our partners with the grant, and they've been very generous. They give a $500 book stipend because they formed a relationship with the Norwood Promise years ago, and they've stayed committed. And their new thing this year was they confirmed every Norwood student for free. So these students came in, we had a party, had a cake, we blew out candles, but they actually confirmed their acceptance to UC Blue Ash, which saved them lots of money and now gets them in the next step. So UC Blue Ash, we're gonna get a bus, and we're gonna bring the other students that are taking College Credit Plus, we're all going out there to take the placement test together at UC Blue Ash, and they're gonna pay for it all. So I just always want people to know, right now, UC Blue Ash is leading the state. In the partnership, we have a thing called the match, which I need the boss over here to sign. I would have to do a little bookkeeping, and Mr. Miracle, you need to sign those. The match means, which we get an amazing match, the match means that when we leave the grant and everything we do will continue, because people have vested interest. So every time that Mr. Modio spends time and works with the grant, that's part of the match, because he takes time in our busy, his busy life and day to support Gear Up. And right now, UC Blue Ash, every time I meet with them, meet with the professors and everything else, it's counted as a match, they're at 17,500. And they have to be at 25 by June. Just so we all know, the Ohio State and Marion, Columbus and all that, there's, I don't mean to be putting them down, it's just a little competitive, 6,000. And they're twice the size of our UC Blue Ash. Crooksville's sitting at like 4,000. So UC Blue Ash, when OBR, Ohio Board of Regents, called us and said, you know that you're sitting at 17,500, and that was just up to January. So it's nice to know that they're taking their college staff and professors to work with our Norwood community, parents and everything else, and it's all, every time they work, it counts as an hour, it counts as their salary, and that's what, they don't hand us $17,000. They're giving us $17,000 worth of services in the last four months, which is wonderful. Okay, so moving along. So we have scholarships, and I briefly talked about that. The kid, you can just see what we give to the students, 'cause you all find this stuff so interesting, I know, but our students have been searching for scholarships. I had a young lady yesterday, or today and yesterday, she is perfect attendance, she's like, where is the scholarship for perfect attendance? I'm like, we're gonna find it, Katie, it is out there, and we are gonna find it. Anyway, and we will, but there are scholarships out there, and our students are looking for it desperately, because they don't wanna be, have loan debt, and that's my job, to make sure that no kid graduates and owes $50,000 four years from now, 'cause we stay with the kids all through college because of the National Clearinghouse. They will be gearing up in March and April for the foundation scholarships and the alumni. Right now, we have a student, Cincinnati Christian, she's working very hard on a full ride. Hopefully, it's looking very good for an urban scholars program. UC Blue Ash, we have quite a few students that got the merit money right out of the chute, and we have two or three that are finalists at NKU for the Opportunity Scholarship, which would be $100,000, full ride for four years. And then we have our Valvatorian going to Wright State. If she chooses that as her final school, she will have a full ride. So we're working really hard, and I'm really proud of this class that they get it. $1,000 here, $1,000 there, it's adding up, and they're seeing it knocked off of their price. And then we have an offer on the table with Georgetown of Kentucky for what, Andy, who spoke with you guys a couple of months ago, and they're just waiting for him to say yes or no. So him and his family are going through that process. So money situation for our seniors is great. Okay, now, I'm moving along, 'cause everyone's getting a little restless. UC Blue Ash, we have done the math collaboration to help our math teachers here at Norwood work with the UC professors. And I just am going to, just briefly, this is an email. One page is when, so first quarter, our teachers went to UC Blue Ash and spent the day there and sat in math classes, and they had breakfast with the professors, and then they went out to the classes, and they actually saw some of their Norwood students, which was really cool. And then they had lunch, and then they saw more classes, and then the UC Blue Ash professors came here in, their exact date was November 30th, and they sat in classes, they sat in Mr. Haas's class and watched his Algebra II, they sat in Financial Algebra, Algebra II again, they sat in Math II, III and IV, they sat in Geometry. The college professors want to see what Norwood's doing in the math classroom so that we can all be on the same page. So then yesterday, our group, Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, went to UC Blue Ash, and again, when we go, they roll out the red carpet, you can see their agenda. And the nice part, this professor's sending this to us on a Saturday. I'm like, the professor, the dean of math for University of Cincinnati, is worried about my teachers, where their schedule's gonna be. It just tells you the kind of relationship. So our teachers went to UC Blue Ash, spent the day, they went to Math Literacy, Intro to Algebra, College Algebra, and then there's time for these teachers to naturally collaborate, and they talk about the differences and what's happening and what we're offering at the high school, and what we can do better, and what they can do better, so that our students, 'cause math is so hard for a lot of us, me included, that when they get to the college level, we need them to score well on the entrance test, maybe the ACT, the entrance test or the compass, or they have to take college classes and not get credit, and they're called developmental, and it doesn't do anything but spend a lot of money for the parent and the kid. And our seniors get that, and we've been prepping them for it. So I'm just, our teachers could not join me tonight, 'cause they're at parent-teacher conferences, which is very important, but I just wanted to read, like Mr. Schenk, I asked him briefly just to reflect, 'cause he's been to UC Blue Ash twice now, and he's had them in their room. So I said to him, what are you, as a high school teacher, getting out of this experience? And Mr. Schenk, teacher's here in our building, he says, seeing the similarities and differences gives us food for thought. It is good to collaborate with educators at the next level to help decide what we can all do to improve our students' future success. I'm learning about programs and supports set in place to help our students transition from high school to college. And then his second question, I said, and I just asked him briefly to do this, 'cause they've been working all day, they worked all day yesterday at the college. What differences do you see between their college math classes and the high school math? And he said, the difference is essentially is how college is set up versus how high school is, because we are watching remedial classes, some of them at UC Blue Ash, the content overlaps. Most of the differences, however, are mostly that it's quieter and more relaxed, et cetera. So there isn't that much of a difference in the content and everything, it's more so the atmosphere. Then Ms. Tapewett, who works and supports our teachers in the math classes with all kinds of kids, she said, personally, you gotta love her, with all these big smiles, I'm getting a ton out of this. Yesterday, I was able to sit in actual classes at UC Blue Ash with students watching the teachers teach and then getting to have dialogue with them, so I can better understand what I need to do to prepare my students. I sat in three classes and saw three kids who I knew from Norwood High School taking math classes, and I was surprised and excited to see them. After talking to them, I found out when they took their placement test, they didn't use the calculator, which they should've, and were stressed. And she said, the placement test is somewhat easy, and now she feels she has to do more support to help them with the placement test, which helps me, because that's my job, too. She also said that the camaraderie built between us would totally benefit any student coming from Norwood, because these professors have seen our faces and completely understand and agree with the struggles we face as high school teachers, and they will be more willing to go the extra mile for our kids. So it's so neat, you know, these professors and our teachers are calling each other by first name, they email, they talk, and it has nothing to do with me, I just set it all up, paid for the food, paid for the subs, and then it's just natural collaboration. Second thing was, I only observed the classes that weren't for credit. So she went to the developmental classes, and she personally did not see a huge difference. At UC Blue Ash, they lecture, assign work, expect participation and collaborate. At NHS, we do all of that, plus differentiating, make snazzy lessons so they wanna learn, and are here invisible and always seeking out kids. At UC Blue Ash, the students are expected to go to office hours if they want extra help. I learned so much, but the best part is to know that some of my, of the professors at UC Blue Ash, and what they want are the exact same things that we want for our kids. So I thought those were two nice emails to share with you. Do you have any questions about the collaboration? No? Okay, well, enjoy the rest of our board meeting. Thank you, always great to see you guys. Do I have everything? Okay, next month, writing fellows.
Thank you, Mary.
Keep letting you be your seat.
We're gonna need some study guide materials, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, our final presentation of the evening is speaking for myself, and the Board of Education is our favorite part of every board meeting, and that's our Rising Stars. When I call your name, please come down, meet with Mr. Faulkner, who'll give you a certificate, and please line up on the blue carpet right in front of the stage. When you are given your certificate and you're standing up here, what I will be reading is the nomination, what your teachers wrote about you. What your teachers wrote, as well as your picture, will be on our website probably by Monday morning, as well as your picture. Write up, and it'll be in the next issue of the Norwood Star. Students who are nominated and have received a certification from Norwood Star are selected with their efforts, their attitude, and just being overall conscientious, strong students. So we're gonna begin tonight, starting out with Norwood High School, and our Rising Star students for the month of February are Kristen McFerrin, Carlisa Steele, and Morgan Benz. Spending time with Kristen McFerrin is always a bright spot in your day. She's a joy to talk to and makes you happier each time you see her. According to her coaches, she always comes to practices and games with a smile on her face and brightens everyone's spirit. Kristen shows strong leadership on the cheerleading squad and in the classroom. She is reliable and responsible, a team player, manages to keep a strong GPA while being involved in school activities and working a part-time job. Kristen is a positive role model to younger cheerleaders, and she motivates them to improve each week. We're fortunate that she is always willing to volunteer at times with the youth cheerleading events in the community. events in the community. Kristin has a bright future ahead, as she has been accepted at Kent State, Cleveland State, Wright State, and numerous other universities, and will study business in the fall. Congratulations, Kristin. Next, if you're looking for a hard-working, kind-chancy student, look no further than Carlicia Steele. Carlicia is the kind of student who works diligently in every bell, every day. Her teachers comment about the amount of detailed, hard work she puts into every single task she completes. In addition to the great grades she achieves, Carlicia is such a polite young lady. The staff at Norwood High School have so much respect for Carlicia and appreciate how polite she is to them. It should also be noted that she is an amazing reader, can be found reading a new novel every couple days. There is likely no one in the building who reads as much as her. We cannot wait to see all the bright things ahead for Carlicia at Norwood High School and beyond. Congratulations. Next is Morgan Benz. She's a student who works very hard every day and does so consistently. As a student, she does not have any lapses with her homework, binders, note-taking, and any other things that often plague high school students. Besides her work ethic and organizational skills, she has an incredible personality and a wonderful sense of humor. She helps out as an office worker every day, during first bell, running errands, greeting visitors, and helping out in any way she can. Morgan is truly a special kid with a bright future ahead of her. She does a phenomenal job of keeping things perspective, and she is definitely a bright spot in our school. Norwood Middle School, gotta stay there, Morgan. Everybody's looking at you. No one else is up here, but you gotta stay there. I'll get some other people here with you. Norwood Middle School's Rising Star students for the month of February are Ivan Carballo, Dahlia Khalil, and Ethan Bailey. Ivan Carballo is the eighth-grade Rising Star student. Ivan is an excellent student and incredibly meticulous in his classwork. He is always prepared and willing to contribute to the classroom in a positive way. He gets along well with his peers and is always kind and considerate of others. He likes helping others when they don't understand something or need assistance. This positive attribute has become especially helpful in Spanish class, because Ivan's native language is Spanish. He is a huge resource to his peers in class and really enjoys helping them out. After school, Ivan spends his time playing soccer, completing homework, helping his siblings with their homework, and listening to music. Ivan also participates in technology club that is offered through avenues for success. Ivan plans on joining the soccer club in the spring and playing soccer in Norwood High School. Ivan's long-term goal is to obtain a well-paying job in the insurance industry and to support his immediate family. Ivan feels that college is really important, but is still undecided about a field of study. Ivan is such a delight to have in class. Teachers at Norwood Middle School know that his hard work and determination will help him conquer his goals. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Dahlia Khalil as a Rising Star student for the month of February. As a seventh grader at the Norwood Middle School, Dahlia makes it her personal goal to demonstrate all of the school's pride and peace builder characteristics in the ways she treats others. Dahlia is an exemplary student in every sense of the phrase. She is dedicated, hardworking, and kind. She studies for tests, completes her homework on time, and cares about her grades and reputation in school. Along with her academics, Dahlia plays middle school basketball, and hopes to join the track team and participates in sewing and cooking club through avenues for success. Well-rounded students like her certainly set a great example for others. Dahlia has also set some lofty goals for herself. She wants to get straight A's all throughout middle school, and she wants to successfully graduate high school with the class of 2021. Eventually, she'd like to apply to multiple colleges and study anthropology to pursue her love for history and social sciences. Norwood Middle School is expecting amazing things from Dahlia in the future. Students like her will make Norwood Middle School great. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Ethan Bailey as a Rising Star student for the month of February. Ethan represents all of the great things Norwood Middle School looks for in its students. Ethan regularly participates in class, completes his homework on time, and takes on a leadership role with his peers. He enjoys studying and learning math and seeks out opportunities to support others. Along with his academic qualities, Ethan also invests time in personal interests like drawing and designing, as well as playing the viola in the school's orchestra. Teachers at Norwood Middle School have nothing but good things to say about Ethan, and instantly nominated him for this honor. As you would expect, Ethan has set goals for himself, including earning straight A's and B's all year. Although he's undecided on what career he's interested in pursuing, he hopes to graduate high school in 2021 and apply to many local colleges. Norwood Middle School is expecting amazing things from Ethan Bailey in the future. Sharpford Elementary and Primary School Rising Star students for the month of February are Kylie Fiasco, Brianna White, and Javier Ramos Nunez. Sharpford first-grade teachers are proud to nominate Kylie Fiasco as the Rising Star student this month. Kylie is a very eager and enthusiastic learner. She puts forth her best effort in all that she does throughout the day. Kylie is an avid learner and seeks out ways to learn outside of the classroom and in the school each day. She visits the Read Box to check out books. She reads poems and stories at home, as well as book-baggy books. Due to her effort and drive to learn, Kylie's made strong growth this year in reading, writing, and math. When asked to help, Kylie is such a team player and shows initiative to help others in class. She is a model for others and works hard to be a champ at all times. Kylie loves to learn, and the first-grade teachers love her. They're so thankful to have worked with her this year and excited to continue to grow with her. You're looking for big things out of Kylie in the future. Congratulations, Kylie. Sharpford third grade has decided to announce Brianna White as their latest Rising Star. Brianna does so many things well. She is kind to her classmates and is always willing to lend a helping hand to someone. Brianna is also a very hard worker when it comes to her schoolwork. She may not always get the answer correct the first time, but will continue to think until she makes sense of the problem or question and can find the solution. Brianna is also one who completes her homework each night. Her teachers appreciate this work ethic, as well as a good example she is showing her classmates. During a recent conference night, Brianna's mother shared that Brianna always wants to come to school. As a matter of fact, on the day when she's not feeling her best, it's hard to keep her home. While we want Brianna to come, to stay home and rest when she is sick, we admire her dedication and positive attitude towards school. We are proud of you, Brianna. Keep up the great work. Javier Ramos Nunez easily qualifies as Sharpford's sixth-grade Rising Star. Javier always comes to school ready to learn with an incredibly positive attitude. He comes to us straight from sunny Florida. Before moving to Norwood, Javier had never seen snow or experienced wind chill. Had a little bit of it this year. Now, true to Javier's spirit, he loves it. His openness to learn has allowed him to quickly grow and mature, both as a student and a person. It is important to Javier to earn good grades. After school, he goes home, does his homework, and reviews what he has learned in class. He is also very kind and helpful to his peers. Although he sees himself as a shy person, you will never know this from all the friends that he has made. Javier wants to be a fireman someday, just so he can help people. Congratulations, Javier. You are an outstanding Sharpford student. Nordview Elementary School Rising Star students for the month of February are Isabella Segal, Rachel McGovern, and Lilly King. Fourth-grade teachers at Nordview have chosen Isabella Segal as her February Rising Star student. Isabella works hard and consistently. She strives for excellence in the classroom each day. She comes to class prepared, participates in classroom discussions, and is focused and attentive at all times. She has such a strong desire to do well and is willing to put an extra effort needed to be successful. She doesn't hesitate to ask questions when she doesn't understand the content being taught. In addition, Isabella is a pleasure to have in class. She is very kind and respectful to her teachers, other students, and the entire staff at View. She always avoids conflict and encourages positive peer relationships. She always has a smile on her face to brighten her day. We are very proud of Isabella, and we know that she will continue to work hard and be successful for many years to come. Way to go, Isabella. Rachel McGovern is exceptionally bright and hardworking in all areas of her academics, as well as art, music, and gym. She is very willing to help other students that are in need and sets a great example of teamwork. Rachel is always on task and continually pushes herself to achieve a higher level of learning. Rachel is an accomplished fiddle player who exhibits her skills at school events and also entertains her principal with good old-fashioned bluegrass music. She hopes to become a doctor someday so she can help sick children. Rachel is a true star and a wonderful role model for all of her peers. Congratulations, Rachel. Lilly King is Nordview's first-grade Rising Star. Although she may be small, she is mighty. Lilly was new to View this year, but she quickly fit in with her easygoing attitude and kind heart. She is a good friend to all, and she is always willing to help those in need. Lilly comes to school each day with a big smile on her face and a positive attitude. She is excited about learning and is always eager to share her ideas. Lilly is an avid reader and does a great job engaging with the story. She is also a fantastic author and illustrator. Lilly makes the world a little brighter wherever she goes. We are so proud to have her as a Nordview Rising Star. Williams Avenue Elementary School's Rising Star students for the month of February are Nina McKenzie, Casey Hill, and Madeline Couch. Nina is the perfect example of a Rising Star. First off, Nina's a very hard worker. She completes all assignments on time, puts maximum effort into every assignment, asks for help, extra help when needed, and puts time into studying for tests and takes her learning very seriously. Secondly, Nina is a great leader and role model. She shows such compassion, kindness, and concern for others whenever possible. She is a trustworthy individual, which is a key component for being a leader. She takes responsibility for leading by example. Nina has such a contagious love for reading. It is rare to ever see her without a book. She sets such a good example that she motivates others to be successful. Nina is polite and respectful, but also in her peers. It is such a pleasure to have Nina in our classroom this year. Casey Hill is an enthusiastic learner who exhibits a positive attitude in class. She is consistently courteous and helpful to her peers and sets an excellent example to the students by remaining an active learner throughout the school day. Casey tackles classroom assignments, tasks, and group work in an organized manner, and always puts her best effort forward. Casey is always willing to take on new things and is excited to learn new tasks. It is a joy and privilege to recommend her for Rising Star Award. Congratulations, Casey. First-grader Madeline Couch is a Rising Star for several reasons. Madeline has made tremendous academic gains since the beginning of the school year, especially in reading and writing. Her oral reading fluency and score, and non-sentence word fluency score, went from well below average in the fall to meeting and surpassing the targeted first-grade benchmark scores for the winter. Madeline's academic improvement can be attributed to the tremendous effort she puts forth each and every day in the classroom. She gives one hundred percent at all times and approaches assignments with enthusiasm and with a positive attitude. I know that Madeline works just as hard at home with her grandmother, too. Madeline's academic improvement has led to increased confidence in the classroom. My heart is truly filled with joy as I watch the little girl who began the school year with so much self-doubt and now work with so much self-confidence, feeling proud of the work that she is producing. As you may, need to squeeze in, squeeze in a little bit.
Can we help the first grader and the second grader come to the front row later? We set up. Okay. All right. Big smile.
I think one of every board meeting, we just take a couple-minute break. If you could follow Ms. Cordenas out to the lobby. If you did get a Rising Star Award tonight, we've got more pictures to take here real quick.
Moving on to item six on the agenda, Education Committee, Ms. Scott Dracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion for approval of the following items. A, approval of the 2016-17 conference dates for the Norwood High School parent-teacher conferences and the Norwood Middle School parent-teacher conferences. Item B, approval of Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services, 2016-17 school year. And item C, approval of student trips for our middle school going to Washington DC in 2017.
We have a motion for approval. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Horsley. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Miracle?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Moving on to item seven, Personnel, Mr. Modio.
Mr. Faulkner, members of the board, I have several items for your consideration this evening under Personnel. Letter A, employment. Number one, resignation. Have one individual. Number two, teacher contract. We have one individual. Number three, educational aid and student assistant aid for 2015-16 school year. Have three individuals. Classified sub, 2015-16 school year, one individual. Number five, resolution to hire non-certified coaches, advisors, 2015-16 school year, nine individuals. That completes my recommendations under Personnel this evening.
We have a recommendation from Mr. Modio. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'm having a motion.
Motion by Mr. Miracle. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes. Moving on to item eight, a recommendation of committee. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the policies as listed.
I'll second.
We have a second for Ms. Scott Dracy. Any discussion? Call the roll, Mr. Strauss, please.
Sorry. Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Miracle?
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With, I'd like to make a motion for item A, use of facilities for A Corp Middle School Fieldhouse, March 11th, from 4:30 to 7:00. And item B, or two, would be Norwood Recreation Shea Stadium for the NSSL Swim Championship, July 17th and 19th, 17th through the 19th of 2016, from 5:00 to 10:00.
Make me a motion.
Motion by Mr. Bryant. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bryant?
Yes.
Miracle?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes. Item 10, Finance Committee, Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get to my committee report, I'd like to read a letter from Dave Yost, Auditor of State, regarding Mr. Strauss for our pressure. The letter reads as follows. Dear Mr. Strauss, congratulations, based upon your recently completed financial audit, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that the Norwood City School District has received the Auditor of State Award. Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation for a good government, and the taxpayers can take pride in your commitment to accountability. The Auditor of State Award is given to those entities that file timely financial reports in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report reads that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings or questioned cost. Enclosed is a certificate for your display. A template press release is also included that you may use to share the good news with your local area media. My office also sends a weekly press release announcing the Auditor of State Award recipients. Congratulations again on receiving the Auditor of State Award. My office looks The Auditor of State Award is given to those entities that file timely financial reports in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report reads that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or questioned cost. Enclosed is a certificate for your display. A template press release is also included that you may use to share the good news with your local area media. My office also sends a weekly press release announcing the Auditor of State Award recipients. Congratulations again on receiving the Auditor of State Award. My office looks forward to continuing to work with you to ensure clean, accountable, and efficient government for all Ohioans. Sincerely, David Yost, Auditor of State.
Thank you, but that goes a lot to Laura Zammerman, Heather Williams, and Joan Vale. They're the hard-working group.
I'll pass this down to Mr. Faulkner, and then also, this is the copy of the press I'll continue on with my committee report. By Recommendation of Committee, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of financial reports, February 2015, and approval of Coca-Cola agreement with the Norwood City School District.
Motion by Mr. Miracle, a second by Ms. Scott Dracy. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
And Faulkner?
Yes.
Moving on to item 11, Hearing of the Public. We have no requests to speak. Moving to item 12, Board Announcements. Any announcements from the board? Just want to say happy birthday to Ms. Emilio. Mama Emilio, is today her birthday?
Today.
Happy birthday, Mama Emilio, watching via the internet. Moving on to item 13, Superintendent's Report.
Mr. Faulkner makes it a glory of mine to try to steal one of my superintendent out of reports. So he steals me saying happy birthday to my mom because she watches these online. Mom, happy 78th birthday. I just have 2 items. One, as many, or as everybody up here is very aware, on Thursday, February 18th, at approximately 11:45, a nonspecific bomb threat was called in in Norwood Middle School. At that time, the district immediately activated a crisis plan and began the work of law enforcement officials to evacuate both Norwood Middle School and Norwood High School. The buildings and grounds of Norwood High School and Norwood Middle School were searched by law enforcement and school personnel. No suspicious objects were found, and students were back into their respective buildings within an hour. Tonight, I would really like to have a special thanks to our staff and students, both the high school and the middle school, for their attention to detail and following our crisis plan very closely and adapting to the crisis at hand. As we know, situations such as this can be often very confusing and chaotic. Our staff and students did just a wonderful job from start to finish. This is a great example of when you practice and prepare for situations such as this, combined with tremendous staff and students, things will go typically as planned. Also, a huge thanks to the Norwood Police Department for their immediate and overwhelming response to this crisis, it was textbook and all we could ever ask. They worked in collaboration with the district and displayed tremendous professionalism and attention to detail. Thank you so much, the Norwood Police Department. What could have been very chaotic that we had planned for and we planned to happen again as well as it could, in accordance with our crisis plan, but just like anything, you always go back and study and make any changes that you may need to or any adjustments to your plan. So it is an everyday job and everyday work for us to do everything we can to keep our students and our staff safe. And that is the number one job of a superintendent, is the safety of our staff and students. And every day, we continue to place detail, great detail, towards it, and it is something we've spent a significant amount of funds towards over the last 8 years, to continue to enhance the safety of our staff and students. The last item in my superintendent's report is we, on Monday, March 7th, coming up at Norwood High School, in this room, we have a social media parent event, and it's called Connected Students in a 7-by-24 World. And this is, again, it starts out in the cafeteria dinner from 6:15 to 7:00, and a presentation for parents of any grade level. That's from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we have daycare for school-aged students during that time, for parents to be able to attend. Dinner's down in the cafeteria, then the event is here. It is, the presentation is by Stephen J. Smith. He's the Director for Educational Leadership for Cincinnati Bell. And this presentation covers the basics concerning the evolution of the mobile world as it relates to student communication. And it's really educational and training for parents around sexting, bullying, online privacy, and social networking. What this presenter does is he will cover the consequences related to misuse of technology and also how students can become good digital citizens. Now, on Friday, prior to this, is, what is that, March 4th, our students will hear this presentation, grades 5 through 8. And on Monday evening, our parents of any grade, doesn't have to just be grades 5 through 8, they have the availability to come to the presentation, get dinner, hear and learn from the presentation, and also have daycare for school-aged children. And then we are running a very similar program with a different group in May, once our testing window is completed for all of our high school students. This is something that, it is a different world. As I was chatting with Ms. Horsley very early this morning, I was remembering how special I thought we were because we got called waiting. And that was a big world at that time in the late 70s. And now, with the instantaneous communication that we have in our world, not only is it important for us to educate our parents and to educate our teaching staff and educate our kids, but really the community as a whole, and how can we use technology for positive ways? And so we're looking forward to this, and this is at no cost to the district. That's also important. So that completes my superintendent's report.
Moving on to Mr. Emilio. Moving on to item 14, Great Oaks Report, Ms. Horsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have met 2 weeks ago to review the facilities plans. I sit on the Facilities Committee, and we have a new Director of Facilities at Great Oaks. And he has really come in and is investigating all of the different areas that the schools have spent money on in the recent years. And so, a couple of changes that they're making are they're bringing all their food service offerings back in-house. They had outsourced much of that work. They're bringing it all back in-house. They're also developing a 5- and 10-year facilities master plan that they're, we're working through. We're going to start touring all of the buildings in each of our monthly meetings because we're going to start visiting each of the sites over the next few months to just understand what are spaces that are and aren't being used, how are they being utilized, and how can they optimize that utilization? So a lot of what they're doing is going to coincide with what we're looking to do here as well. So I've been sharing and will continue to share information with Mr. Emilio. I have a pile of documents that I can send to you, but it's going to be pretty busy for the next few months because they want to get all of this squared away prior to next school year, just with the plan. So I'll be sharing more in the next few months.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item 15, Avenue of Success, Ms. Horsley.
So we've been on a little bit of a hiatus. There's not been much going on, although much work has been doing with the after, been going on with the after-schools program. We did have 2 state visits this past week, and everything was really good. So that's great that one was announced and one was unannounced that happened on the same day, which was very strange, but all went really well. And we're gearing up for our Glow for the Cure, which will be in May, and I'll share specific information on dates and times with you next month, but our next meeting will be in March, and we're going to have to start rolling up our sleeves to plan that event. So that's my update for now.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Horsley. Item 16, On the Agenda Legislative Report, Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items I'd like to share with my legislative update. The House Education Committee heard testimony on House Bill 445. The legislation would make changes to the College Credit Plus program and specify that students participating in the program should not be denied the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities based solely upon participating in the CCP program. And also, House Bill 410, which addresses, the committee accepted a substitute version of the bill before passing and out of committee, the substitute version removes references to Khan Crews in the law and makes the new policies effective for 2017-2018 school year.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miracle. Item 17, On the Agenda Meeting Notification. We will be having meetings on Tuesday, March 1st. It's a committee meeting, and that is in the Board of Education Office on Williams Avenue, and then a regular scheduled board meeting on Thursday, March 17th, in the mini auditorium here. Can I get a motion to approve those meetings?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Ms. Scott Dracy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? This is the 17th date?
Yeah.
Okay.
17th.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Miracle?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda, Executive Session. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G1, the appointment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulator of individual. And 2, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G2, the purchase of property for public purposes for the, or the sale of property in a competitive bidding.